... patience and waiting for us and having a recess. I think everybody in the audience has well needed to get a good leg stretch in. So we are going to start our agenda for the evening. First, we have a call to order in establishing a quorum, which we are lucky to have everyone here today. And then we're going to do our pledge of allegiance. So Mr. Abenizer, will you please start us in our pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. What a treat from our senior board member. All right. Next, we need to do our adoption of the agenda. So I'd like to see a motion to either adopt or amend the agenda as it's listed.
Motion to approve.
Second. All right. So the adoption of the agenda has been first and seconded. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, all in approval of, all in approval of the adoption of our agenda, please raise your hand. I apologize. All right. That's everybody. Thank you so much. All right. We're going to begin our evening with one of our most exciting parts, the awards and recognitions of our school system, which there are always many and just a highlight of the goodness that you see inside of our schools every day. So I will turn that over to Dr. Battle.
Thank you, Chair Elrod and board members. Tonight, we have the pleasure of recognizing an early career teacher who has already shown great promise, initiative and commitment to her students' learning and success. In November, Grace Carlson, a chemistry and physical science teacher at Hillwood High School, was named a 2022 Teaching Fellow by the Knowles Teacher Initiative, a national nonprofit organization that supports math and science teachers who are collaborative and innovative leaders. The Knowles Teaching Fellows program is a five-year program designed to support the needs of first, second, and third-year biology, chemistry, physics, and math teachers who are committed to supporting all learners. Knowles Teaching Fellows have access to some excellent benefits, including membership in a national community of more than 450 math and science educators, coaching and mentoring from experienced teachers and teachers educator, teacher educators, and more than $50,000 in financial support for professional development, classroom materials, and stipends. Ms. Carlson, congratulations on your fellowship. This is a great honor, and we are so proud of you and thrilled that you are part of Team MNPS at Hillwood. Please come on up so we can take a picture and congratulate you.
Thank you for being here. Congratulations.
Congratulations again, Ms. Carlson. And with that, Chair Elrod, I will turn it back over to you.
Okay. Well, I'm about to hand it back to you.
Yes, you are.
Coming up next is our volley back. The next part of our board meeting is going to be our director's report. We're going to be going over our budget priorities, which we have had some exciting conversation about if you missed it during our committee meetings. And there'll be a report at the end of our meeting to kind of quickly go over that. But before we do this, Dr. Battle, will you give us our director's report?
All right. Thank you again, Chair Elrod and board members. For tonight's director's report, I wanted to give an update and overview of our budget process this year that will be undertaken over the coming months to serve our students and staff in the 2324 fiscal year. But first, this is School Board Appreciation Week here in Tennessee, and I want to say how much I appreciate all of you here at the board, who are such strong advocates for our students, our teachers, our school administrators, and for the programs and initiatives that will help us to achieve our North Star of being the premier large school district in Tennessee and beyond. So those of you who are in the audience, please take a moment with me to stand and give it up in appreciation to our school board. And how fortunate we are to also have student school board members. They got me working my own PowerPoint tonight. Okay. Starting in 2020, we adopted a different way of addressing the budget as a school district that sought to fix a broken process experienced by some of my predecessors. The reality is, is that we're tasked with trying to formulate a budget with many unknown factors and without key pieces of information that would inform any budget process, which is how much money we'll have to work with. We likely won't see any reliable state funding estimates until at least late March or early April after fiscal capacity numbers are generated, which tell us how much of a burden Davison County taxpayers will have to shoulder for the statewide local match for TISA. That state revenue will then be folded into Metro's budget to generate a total amount of new revenue that will be available for the district to invest. Additionally, we sought out to create a budget that was more transparent about what we need to continue operations while also allowing the funders for public schools, the mayor, the council, this board, to see a menu of options for different programs and initiatives that could be funded in addition to our baseline layer support that will move the needle for our students. So that's why we've come, we've come up with the budget process, as it has been successful the last couple of years in bringing all stakeholders to the table around a common vision for public education here in Nashville. The foundation for our budgeting process starts with the continuity of operations budget. This is basically the money or the funds it would require to keep the same baseline level of service year over year without any new additions to programming. This does include step increases for our employees to ensure that we're moving along the pay scale so that we are respecting their years of service to the district and commitment to the students we serve. Then we have several increases related to non-discretionary items that are required by us, such as the Metro Information Technology Fund, MDHA transfer, and insurance increases. We have inflationary price increases to things like maintenance supplies and utilities that are outside of our control. And then the charter allocation increases required by law as a matter of either enrollment growth or reflection of the increased amount of money in the fund balance designated by Metro that we're required to allocate on a per pupil basis to charter schools, even though we're unable to use that money without council approval. That brings us to our aspirational budget. This is where we proposed highest best, high-leverage best practices and high-leverage educational strategies to move our district forward and better serve our students and families. At the top is employee compensation, where we'll seek investments that will help us to retain and recruit great teachers and support staff, reward those who have shown a longstanding commitment to serving at MNPS, and ensure that wages are keeping up with inflation. For this budget cycle, our pay study, we are focusing on phase three of our plan around administrator compensation. Continuative federally funded initiatives will represent the many programs that are currently being funded primarily through ESER that will expire at the end of the 2324 fiscal year when funding runs out. We need to continue to have a very real conversation with all stakeholders about our needs to move from federal to local funding. Those programs or services, we wish to continue for future years if we're going to maintain or exceed the progress we've made the last two years for our students. The next two categories will represent new investments, items that haven't been funded through ESER or operational budgets in the past in order to further expand our offerings. There are two categories, academic and SCL integration and operational improvements in school support, which can cover everything from maintenance to transportation to technology and more that help us better serve our students and schools. Academic and SCL integration, because improving literacy, numeracy, and socio-emotional focused outcomes is our top goal here at MNPS. And then operational improvements in school support, simply ensuring students arrive on time, have access to internet and technology, and we can hire and staff our schools are essential to supporting the work that is happening in classrooms all across the district. So over the next few weeks, Support Hub leadership will be compiling a list of budget needs and requests that include the theories of action and the costs associated with each budget item for the continuity of operations and operating budgets. On March 28th, we will present the draft budget to the board for review and consideration before we then take it on the road to our four quadrants of our district to get stakeholder input and feedback. This year, we'll be doing things just a bit differently than in previous years by starting off with a school showcase that will feature a deeper dive into some of the district-led initiatives being implemented at the school level to support our students. We'll follow this by more traditional budget presentation with opportunity for feedback before the board considers again the budget on April 11th. And so we've identified the four quadrant community budget meetings will kick off on Wednesday, March 29th, in the Northwest Quadrant at White Creek High School, followed by Thursday, March 30th, in the Southeast Quadrant at Kane Ridge Elementary School. On Tuesday, April 4th, we'll travel over to Northeast at DuPont-Hatley Middle, and then we'll round out our fourth quadrant meeting on Monday, April 10th, in the Southwest Quadrant at Hillsborough High School. So finally, here is an outline for the general budget timeline with our budget process followed by the mayor and metro council culminating in an adopted budget before July 1. That will conclude our budget walkthrough and presentation and timeline, Chair. And so I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you. All right. What questions or discussion do we have? Dr. Gentry.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Chair Elrod, thank you. So I want to go back to the, the community meetings. Are we, what are we providing in advance of that for people to sort of process and absorb so that they can come ready with questions? I think we, I would just like to see us use less time on the, in the meeting with, you know what I mean? So just give, what are we providing or how, or what resources will we have as, as board members to start to get it out to our community groups, you know, other individuals and use their networks to push it, push the information out?
Yes, thank you. So similar to previous years, we will have the actual budget presentation that will be made public. We also compile kind of a one-pager, if you will, of what those buckets look like and the priorities with associated budget requests. And so we'll have the full budget presentation available publicly, and we'll also kind of condense it into that one-page summary that this board can leverage and that the community can have at their disposal prior to the quadrant meetings. On March 28th, which is the day before the White Creek Quadrant meeting, we will also be providing this board and committee and as a board during the board meeting, an updating report of where we are with our aspirational budget.
Do we have times for those yet?
Yes, thank you for that. Each of these quadrant community meetings will start at 5:00 with the school showcase. The showcase will last approximately 45 minutes. We'll have a quick 10- to 15-minute transition, and at 6:00, we'll start the budget portion of the community meetings.
Ms. Mays?
Yes. And let me just encourage our MNPS team members to understand and/or to remember that we are an acronym-driven school district. When we have these community meetings, I would encourage you to make sure that you are speaking the language of our parents, because not every parent is going to understand TISA, and not every parent is going to understand, and I'm not, I don't mean dumb it down, I just mean speak clear language to our parents so that as we are making these presentations, they understand exactly what we're talking about.
Yes, absolutely. In our presentations, that is something that we always pay attention to, especially in initial introduction to any acronym. It is very easy and common that when you're responding to a question, to use an acronym. So I would also like to empower this board and any community leaders, stakeholders, parents, students, if you ever hear or come across an acronym that you are unfamiliar with, it is okay to ask for clarification, because we are always happy to pause, slow down, and make sure that we're explaining the acronyms. It is just common in education to use lots of them, but we will, in a proactive way, try to call out as many of those acronyms as possible.
I think that's especially important as we talk to our parents that, who have English as a second language. It's extremely important that they understand the full scope of what the conversation is about. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board?
To follow up with Ms. Mays's comment, will we have translators available at these budget hearings to be able to accommodate families with multiple languages?
Yes. And the good news is, we, if you recall, we did these community engagement meetings prior to the pandemic. The good news is that we've expanded our team, and so we have a little more muscle behind us in being able to offer interpretation and translation support as needed throughout the community engagement sessions.
Thank you. I have a comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment, which is that I'm, I'm glad to see that the sort of separation or reiteration of the things that are going to be ESER continuations or ESER replacements and separate from some of the additions that we're going to want to make in those latter two areas of SCL supports and academic instruction. I think it's going to be really important for the board, the community, our elected leaders that will help fund this to understand which things we're trying to continue and based on what we know about what's working and, and trying to make sure that we're able to maintain the same level that we have now in terms of supports for our students. So thank you for that.
Ms. Player?
I just want to let community know, as we go into these budget conversations, to really understand what it takes to run our schools and to understand that even though we have a $1.1 billion budget, 80% of that goes to humans to actually live and to thrive, and that we can't fund everything to everyone. And our first priority is to educate our childrens and to put it in the classroom and the people that serve them. And I think it's very important that people know, like, well, you have a $1.1 billion budget, why can't you do this? Why can't you do that? It's not that we don't have desire to, but we do have limited funds. And we have people in the community who are quick to look at our $1.1 billion budget and to shrink it in size because they think we can be more efficient with it. We cannot be more efficient with it. This is the first time we've had historic investments, and we have seen when we invest those dollars, the growth that's happened and the improvement that's happened with our students and our employees. And I think that some of this is a money issue, that we have to invest to see improvement. And we have proven that as we've gotten more investments. We have shown a return on those investments by investing in our, in our community, investing in our teachers, them feeling valuable, our support staff feeling valuable, our students feeling valuable, and then return be able to be them best selves and to be able to excel in this time. We still have a long way to go, and we understand that. But I want people to understand, as requests comes, as you write us letters and emails and talk to us, understand our first goal is to educate children in the classroom to improve our reading and our reading growth, our reading engagement, comprehension, test scores, to do the best that we can. And that it's a community conversation. It does, it starts with us, but does not end with us. As investment with the mayor's office, and investments council, and the investment with our community partners, I will preach private-public partnerships. So those in the public, we will take lovely gifts and grants to help fund our programs to make this happen. It really is a community effort, and I think that's something we as a community, we as a county and organization have to say, we want to invest our tax dollars into our children so we have viable and a vibrant community that everyone succeeds and thrives, not just survive. And so I really want to put that engagement of, we are doing very well. Dr. Battle has truly transformed this budget process. If you, prior to her tenure, it was much more contentious, and she really became an innovative way of really examining and being very transparent what our priorities are. As a board, we've been very transparent where our priorities are and what things cost. And I think that's a very crucial part that we do. We look at an aspirational budget, how much it costs to put school psychologists or more textbooks or things like that. They have a true hard dollar amount. And as our parents would say, money doesn't grow on trees. And so as we generate new revenue, as we do that, I challenge you to challenge other leaders, how do you generate more revenue for our schools? How do we really become, we are a significant part of the metro budget, but even a little bit more of that, and what it takes to do that and the collaborative effort that it does? And so we ask you to support us and to walk with us and to say the good things that we are doing and to show that and showing that your investment is sound and that we're not just investing for a turn, but we're investing into our children and that we're investing in people. And keep that to mind, that we're just not little widgets and little, you know, factory workers just trying to churn out children just to be better students and be more efficient students, that they actually are true learners and they're actually productive citizens. And so I just want to get on my soapbox for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Tyler?
Yes, I just wanted to kind of build a little bit on what Ms. Player was saying about investing in our students is our top priority and always has been and will continue to be that, be so. And in order to invest in our students, we have to invest in the people who take care of them in the classroom, at the administration level, at the parent-pro level, at all levels, people who drive them to school, pick them up, take them home again, feed them their lunches. Investing in our students is investing in the people who care for them. So we want, we are, that is why it is at our top priority. We will continue to have that as our top priority. And one last comment would be that there has been a plethora of research that shows that the number one thing that we can do that always gives you a good return on investment for your students is putting more money in the system. It's not getting a new program. It's not trying something else. When you invest in your systems, it is research proven that it increases the good outcomes for the students. So just want to make sure we all keep that in mind as we move through this budget season.
Veronica McKinnon?
I just want to thank Dr. Battle and her team and all of the board members who worked to contribute to this as well. These budget engagement sessions, previously, they, this is the first time we're doing that, or it's happened previously and we're continuing it again. We really understand the importance of engaging our community and our partners across the city to really invest and highlight the great work that we are doing in the district as well as what it would cost to continue that work and continue to receive that return on investment with our children and their success. I do want to highlight also that, you know, MNPS has been a historically underfunded district, and recently, we have had historic investments in our district, and we want to continue on that upward momentum to continue to make these historic investments within our schools for the improvement of our kids and the, and the, and the children and, and staff that we serve here within Metro Nashville Public Schools. So these are very important conversations. Please communicate these with other parents and community partners across Nashville. We would love the turnout. We would love the feedback. We want to continue to spread this word and word and information and be completely transparent in the process as well. So thank you again for your work on this and the work that lies ahead. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Dr. Battle and her staff of entertaining my request for bringing back our quarterly budget or quadrant budget meetings, as we did them last in 2020, right before the pandemic. It was actually the last thing I did before shutdown happened. So I believe it's the right step for us to be inside of our quadrants and inside of our communities so that we can be more accessible to them and so that we can have better conversations about how these dollars affect their schools. And so on top of that, I did have the request for the school showcase. And so I appreciate that work that's being done, not just by Dr. Battle and her staff, but also our schools. I say a lot here on the board, there are good things that happen every day in every school, and I absolutely believe that to be true. And I think it's important that we all focus on not just the work that we have ahead of us, which is always plentiful. There's always work and always hands needed. But it's also important for us to know that there's great things happening and that there needs to be a showcase and focus on that work that's being done and how multifaceted it is and how it's impacted by those budgets. So I appreciate that that's been done, and I look forward to my board members being in attendance to those things. I know that it's a lot of work for our staff, not just in preparation, but also on the days of attendance, so everyone is aware. I am talking to the Education Committee for Metro Council, and they are planning currently to be in attendance at some as well, and we'll likely talk about it with the rest of council as I have those meetings going forward. So if you missed our committee meeting that we had on budget and finance, there were some statistics that were shared in that budget meeting about our current funding. As you may or may not know, we are constantly talking about the dollars that we have and how we can best use them and be good financial stewards of the funds that we have, both in our operational and capital budget. So we encourage you always to reach out to us with your questions or concerns, and we always look forward to your participation in helping us advocate for having the best funds from our state and helping us kind of right-side up the 30% that we receive from the state, 26% in some cases, where our city has to make up that and the 70%, where every other county of the 95 is the opposite. So we appreciate y'all's help and also advocating for us, not just in what's needed for our students, but also our staff and our teachers and the classrooms that we support.
All right. Let's move on to public participation. All right, we will now hear, thank you so much for that. I apologize for that not great transition. We will now go to public participation, and it looks like there might, there might be a list that's going to pop up. So those are going to be MNPS stakeholders that signed up to speak in front of the board, and it looks like we have Dawn Marie Moore to talk to us about ACT. I'm assuming Ms. Moore is not here. Do we have anyone else? Okay. I appreciate us going through that. I apologize that Ms. Moore was not able to make it. All right, let's move on to governance issues. Okay. We have adopted the agenda as listed. May I now have a motion to approve the consent agenda as it's listed?
With approval of the consent agenda as presented. Second.
All right. The approval has been first and seconded. Do we have any discussion? All right. Seeing none. May I have hands that are in approval? Thank you. That's everybody. All right. That brings us to our board committee reports.
Number two.
Excuse me. I skipped that part. Yeah, so that brings us to number two, the capital improvement budget. May I have a motion for that? That's so exceptionally important.
I motion to approve the capital improvement budget.
Second.
That first and seconded. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none?
Don't say it.
I will not accept any discussion about McGavick, though we do love you, McGavick.
So that opens the floor for the anti-octet.
That too.
All in favor?
All right. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. That's everybody. All right, I apologize for skipping over number two. All right, board committee reports. We had a number of committee meetings this afternoon. I appreciate those that were in attendance, including my colleagues and staff. The first one that we're going to go through on these quick reports is teaching and learning with Chair Tyler.
Yes, so we had kind of a twofer. We talked a little bit about our new math adoption materials. It was very detailed and gave a lot of really good information about how we get to choose the materials that we use. I really highly suggest that if you're interested or you're curious or you're concerned, that you go back and you check out exactly the kind of care and thought that goes into choosing our materials. That being said, I also wanted to add, and I'll say this again later, that the current math materials are available at the MNEA office for public view, so anyone can view them. They're also available online. If you can't make it there, I've got links to that. I really highly suggest that if you're interested or you're curious or you're concerned, that you go back and you check out exactly the kind of care and thought that goes into choosing our materials. That being said, I also wanted to add, and I'll say this again later, that the current math materials are available at the MNEA office for public view, so anyone can view them. They're also available online if you can't make it there. I've got links to that on my social media page and I think that they're also on MNPS has shared them in the past as well. So that, that's up there. And then we also had a really thorough discussion about our students who are English language learners and the kind of supports that the district provides for them and the excitement that we have for the strides that we're making and where we want to see ourselves continue to grow.
Next is director's evaluation. Would you like to go, Dr. Danama McKinnney?
Sure. I can give a brief overview, yeah. So we, in the director's evaluation, we had a discussion over the timeline and overview of the director's evaluation process. We had a robust conversation during our retreat a couple of months ago that initiated the process for the director's evaluation. We have already completed quarter one and we will go into quarter two with a semi-evaluation. We'll have a longer discussion around the director's evaluation in a committee meeting, the last board meeting in February. And so we will have more discussion around that. Again, we ask all board members to make sure that you are looking at the, going into the system, looking at the evaluation process and providing the necessary feedback. Thank you.
Next is governance. Chair Muster.
Thank you. So we got back together to approve the changes to Board Policy 1.901. As you may recall, at the last governance meeting, we had a conversation about the changes to 1.900, which removed a portion, they got moved to 1.901. We got a really great explanation of it. I won't go into that in detail since anyone who would like to can watch the video of the governance committee meeting when we got that wonderful explanation. But it passed unanimously and we are now fully, not only fully in compliance with the state around our policies, around charter school compliance, but we, everything is sort of just more, more clearly defined and allows for, in some cases, the necessary time for our charter school office to make all of the accommodations that they need to make.
Thank you. And last is budget. Chair Player.
We passed the capital improvement project request and we had a very lively discussion of people's wish lists and desires, but the importance of make sureing that we continue to, with our maintenance and requests for new schools and replaced schools, more replacement schools and renovations for upcoming schools. If you look in your packet, you'll see the full budget request that we will send on to the mayor's office as they did and it passed unanimously.
Thank you. If the public doesn't want to watch the videos and to get the entire materials, these materials are updated on our calendar, on our board calendar for each individual meeting. Our PDFs available for the public as well, not just for our five o'clock meeting, but for all committee meetings. All right, that brings us to announcements. District one.
Hey, very good. So thank you. I just want to thank my colleagues for their presence at the chamber report card thingy thingy today. It felt good. It literally, probably for the first time in a long time. And I don't know if it's because folks have figured out that beating up on us is really not the order of the day. It's not the thing that's going to move the needle. And so I, I later, because I really gloated the whole time I was sitting there. So later, I got to this point of appreciation for the acknowledgement of a good thing, of a good thing that is happening in our district around our work-based learning opportunities that we're providing to high school students and looking to expand to even more high schools as we, we move on. I will say that the recommendations felt like a teaching and learning committee outcome. I think it's, but it's good to know that we're, we're not crazy, right? So the things that we say that will be impactful, the things that we say that are needed and necessary are now getting affirmed by a group of people who don't do this every day. And so maybe that will help to get the attention that we desperately need. When we discuss additional resources and expansion of positive opportunities that are beyond advanced academics, they're about, beyond AP courses, that there are a myriad of opportunities for our students to get the much-needed support that they need. There are many opportunities for students to expand and grow in the direction that aligns with where they see themselves and where they can be their most productive and their most impactful. I also want to continue that thread and say, Rachel Ann Elrod, well done. Your comments were on point. Some little slickness going on in there, I appreciate it, I felt seen. And just the reiteration, albeit subtle, that this good thing that was highlighted today as a part of the chamber report card came as a result of collaboration with an amazing director of schools and a local control school district. That it came as a collaboration between an amazing director of schools and awesome all-female board. That wasn't the part you wanted to hear again. Ah, and a district that was under, is under local control and that the difference isn't in the control, it's in the partnerships, as is evidenced by the good thing that was highlighted today. So thank you all. I think it felt different today. It felt good, sitting there with all of you and the fact that we all were able to make time today for almost, not really your first, but it kind of felt like your first and to be there to support our chair. It did, it was a good day. Just to reiterate, the community budget meetings that were highlighted today, I hope that you all get a chance to post those on your various social media sites. We'll be highlighting the White's Creek Community Budget Meeting, scheduled for the 29th of March, five o'clock school showcase and six o'clock budget meeting. And then a final note on the capital needs, I won't say the thing, but that is also an aspect of the budget I'm asking the community to pay close attention to. Because again, as was pointed out, those things that start off as remediation can become, and then go to renovation, can become replacement if we are not funded to the degree that we need to be funded. And then at that point, some bigger and sometimes more difficult decisions need to be made. So please join us at those meetings and in our advocacy for our students and our schools. Thank you.
Did you want to drop your mic now? Or? District three.
Oh, that's right, your district. I was like, no, two comes next.
She can't even count.
For being a math curriculum, all right.
I was an, I was an English major. Psychology, dance and women's studies minor, because I'm indecisive. Thank you for all that. It was exciting for all nine of us to be there today. Also, really interesting that the work of the committee really ended up sort of affirming something that's been going on for quite a while in MNPS. And I just, I have to tag on a little bit to what Sharon said. This, this woman, Margaret Ann Byerly, who was there representing Enterprise Solutions, it's one of the first companies to sign on with our MNPS student work program. And she was just full of some one-liners and I just found myself writing them down. I mean, she started with, I just cannot speak more highly to the talent pipeline coming out of MNPS. She talked about how this programming is about how their passions can find a paycheck and it's not just a job, it's a career. And I think that for a lot of us, at least, you know, I came up through the eighties and nineties in Tennessee public schools and, and I, I think I have this different concept of CTE. And, and I think some of our state legislators still have that sort of antiquated concept around what it is. And the reality is, we're, we're doing it and doing it well in Metro Nashville Public Schools and in a way that students can discover their passion. And the way I'll explain it, you know, when one of my constituents says, but I mean, I don't want them to go to high school just to learn how to just do this one thing. Well, it's high school plus. That's what, I mean, that's what I've started saying. They're all doing high school. They're all getting all the high school things plus. And our typical MNPS student graduates with more credits than are required for high school in the state of Tennessee because they've had all of these opportunities. And I mean, you may come up through the Hospitality Management Academy and decide that you want to go to school to be an engineer and that is absolutely fine, but you have had, much like I changed my major so many times that I had three minors by the time I graduated college. It's about trying stuff out and just having those opportunities. So I enjoyed that and I wrote transportation real big. And so I think we were able to pinpoint a big area of advocacy, which is going to be working on getting some WIGO stops that are convenient to our schools. Also just want to remind students, February 1 is the FAFSA deadline, so get, get on it with that. And I also, Dr. Kessler at Hunters Lane High School sends out these really great Warriors notes that, and I really liked this bit of information, this tidbit that she provided in the one last week. A student who gets a 27 or below on the ACT has a 75% chance of improving their score by retaking it. So practice makes perfect. Take it more than once if you need to, because I know that's what's everyone, on everyone's mind right now. So that's all I have. And also, Dan Mills and Gateway Elementary need new school buildings.
District four.
That follows up with me in district four.
So I won't bring that up, but you guys, I think I've related enough today. I'd want to follow up with Dr. Gentry and Ms. Masters. The, the chamber report today brought in a lot of insight, but I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the work that has happened prior to students get to work-based learning. We have a national model for the academies of Nashville where we are preparing students starting in their ninth grade year, introducing them to that academies model so that they are prepared throughout their 10th and 11th grade year to go into these work-based learning programs. Also, we are extending this into our middle schools and so there's, there's opportunities there and also in our elementary schools where we are doing the hard work of preparing students at each tier prior to getting to work-based, work-based learning. So I just really want to acknowledge all of the team and the hard workers in our, each of our tiers from elementary to middle to high school that are working diligently every day to prepare our students for those opportunities for college and career in Metro Nashville Public Schools. I also want to give a shout out to Ms. Justice at Pearl Cone High School, who served on the panel. She is a 12th grader, a senior at Pearl Cone in the Healthcare Academy that she has gone through since 10th grade, that has prepared her for the experiences in the work-based learning program in her 12th grade year. She was very articulate in the way in which she expressed how important the work-based learning opportunity was for her and how it is, how it will lead her trajectory post-graduation. So I'm really appreciative of her and really listening to our young people and how these programs are impacting and improving and enriching their lives. So thank you so much. I want to move on to optional applications have opened up in the district as of yesterday. Those optional applications are open until February 10th. And I'll repeat that, February 10th is the deadline to apply for optional schools across MNPS. We have an array of schools across our district. There is a website, wmnps.org backslash apply is what I saw, and that should lead you to all of our optional, is that right? Okay. That will lead you to all of the schools to learn more about. I encourage all parents, I've received a lot of phone calls about parents around schools. I invite all parents to just take a moment to schedule visits at your schools, talk with principals and staff about the needs of your child and find the best fit for them. We have a lot of great options across our district and within your cluster that are great fits for, for children across our district. So I encourage you to visit schools and make the best decision for you and your family. I'm also excited to announce that we held, held our first PAC meeting since I have become on the school board. I was originally the PAC chair for the McGavick Cluster, the largest high school in the district. And so we had our first PAC meeting in the McGavick Cluster. We replaced it with a, our PAC cluster meeting with my normal monthly coffee and conversations. We were able to elect our new PAC cluster board. And so I want to welcome Ashley Gish and Scott Tosh, two elementary and middle school parents within the McGavick Cluster as co-coordinators. Kelly Peterson, who was an elementary parent, as the secretary and Derek Williams, who has an elementary and high school parent within our cluster, as our events coordinator because we really want to work towards engaging parents within the cluster. On that note, I want to thank our PAC chair, BB Hines, as well as the MNPS Family Engagement Coordinator, Dr. Yolanda Jackson, and their teams for working closely to start PACs and continue PACs in every cluster across MNPS. I am going to send a charge out to each board member. I've also messaged all of you to please help support us in your particular cluster and district, to engage parents, get them involved, and the PAC is the avenue to make that happen. So let's make this happen. We want parent voice, we want parent participation. We know what research says, the more a parent is involved, the more successful a student will be in their learning. So let's get them involved across MNPS. And then we have a meeting scheduled between the PAC, the Support Hub, and Dr. Bellamy, Chief of Academics and Schools about third grade retention. That will be held this Thursday in the Wellness Center across from this boardroom from 6:00 to 7:30. We're going to talk about what the third grade retention is, what it means for your children and the resources that MNPS has in place to support your students and the families across MNPS. So we look forward to you participating and spreading the word on that as well. And with all of that, thank you all so much. Can't say I'm not committed to this board. I showed up on my birthday. I'm only 25, but I am here today committed to our students and our families, our teachers and our staff across MNPS. Thank you.
District five.
Thank you for that. And with supporting parents in mind, I want to say thank you to Mr. David Rhodes, who is not only a manager at a regions in East Nashville, but is also a parent at Jones. And we had our very first parent-led meeting in at least the last five years in that Pearl Cone Cluster area with, with Mr. Rhodes doing a financial, offering financial literacy, tips, tricks, supports. And we're looking, we're like, we're really excited to do our next one. In fact, I want to let the entire community know, but for sure the Pearl Cone Cluster know, and the rest of District Five, that Pivot Tech is an organization that teaches adults to code and engage in other technology-based service, or learn technology-based services so that they can have higher income earning power. With that said, we're working with them. We're also working with United Way with their VIDA program and with their two-on-one program to make sure that we're continuing to, to help the infrastructure that MNPS already has set up, to share all these special resources with our community at large. But we'll be having a, an event in early February. I'll share that date, the first meeting in February. But we'll not only have performances by our children, but resources being shared by a community partner. So be on the lookout for that. We're still kind of in the works. I'm so excited because kindergarten registration is open and my baby has complete, well, will have completed two years in MNPS and he has made, he's been made better for it. So when pre-K registration opens in a couple of months, parents, if you have a three-year-old or a four-year-old, please consider MNPS. But for those of you But for those of you who will have a baby who is five-year-old, I'm sorry, a big person that will be five years old by August 15, 2023, please consider enrolling them in kindergarten with Metro Nashville Public Schools. You will not be dissatisfied, you will be satisfied. Also, of course, Promising Scholars, and that accepts kindergarten students. Woo woo, cannot wait to put him on that bus. We also have an East Nashville Magnet School crawl happening on January 31 at, from 4:30 PM to 6:30 PM. If you are considering Inglewood Elementary, Rosebank Elementary, or Warner Elementary, they all received that MSAP grant a few years ago and have thrived. I mean, they were already on an upper trajectory, but that was, that's a poster story or a great case study to prove that investing, adding more resources, adding professionals, and adding training for those professionals really does work wonders for those professionals and for the children that they serve, because they have all seen increases academically and have seen decreases in behavioral issues. I also, I just appreciate that this board continues to kind of advocate, whether it's joking or straight-faced, two years ago, no, last year, I'm sorry, the Chamber of Commerce was looking to update their education report, and we recommended that they actually interview students. So I believe Abenizer and our past senior board member, student board member, Angelie, that, yeah, I really, I didn't forget her name. But anyway, that they were able to speak to these business leaders, business professionals, try to advocate on behalf of MNPS. And those Chamber Report members just kept saying how important that was for them. Not only did they get to speak to students, but they also got to speak to a principal and a pre-K teacher. And I just think that the more we expose the community at large to what's really happening in our schools, and really share with them why we're asking for resources, why we're asking for investments of time or energy, the more that they really will wrap their arms around us. And so, thank you for your continued advocacy. I was, you know, I was tapped out after those two years as chair, but being around you all, feeling your energy has made me at least want to complete this term. You're not going to see me after this. But anyway, thank you so much from District 5.
Yes, we will. District 6.
If anyone has any question about why I enjoy working with these women, it should have been answered tonight. I absolutely adore working with this group of women. It is amazing. And I thank you so much for your passion and your dedication and your engagement and support of our families and our children. Today, you know, as Dr. Gentry said, today put a big, old, warm fluffy in my heart, because I have gone to the education report card meetings for many, many years. And today, seeing all of these bright, beautiful faces sitting there and supporting our children just warmed my heart. And it was especially nice because I felt seen. I've been working in this space of work-based learning for a really long time, and I just felt seen and heard. And I'm glad that our kids felt seen and heard. And you're right, Justice was amazing. She was amazing. And she's an MNPS soon-to-be graduate, so there's that. So just really quickly here, as Dr. Battle mentioned, we will do budget meetings, budget community meetings coming up soon. We will not have a meeting in February, our community meeting in February, because it falls on Valentine's Day, and I am not going to be the only one at this community meeting. So we will hold off until the March meeting, which will be, we'll move it to March 30 to support the budget meeting that will be held in the community. And I would encourage every single person who has had conversations with me, emailed me, or called me about the budget, to show up at this meeting. That will give you an opportunity to have all your questions answered. If you don't show up at this meeting, I'm not going to say I'm not going to talk to you, but I'll be a little salty. But please come to this meeting. It'll give you an idea of how this budget works. Also, I'd like to give a big shout out to Ms. Debra Crosby, our Work-Based Learning Coordinator. She's doing a phenomenal job, and it showed today. So I'm very grateful for her, and I thank her for her participation today. Thanks, Dr. Nabah McKenney, for sharing about the PAC meeting. And by the way, I have reached out to President BB Hines to get a meeting set up in District 6. We are going to make sure that we are represented on the PAC. And I had one more thing I wanted to share. Well, I can't find it now, so, oh, here it is. Wanted to say thank you to Mr. Ashford Hughes for his participation in our most recent District 6 Community Meeting. We had, our topic was equity in education, and he did a fantastic job presenting. Got a lot of feedback. And one of the things that we talked about during that meeting was increasing the level of community engagement across the district. And so I have several attendees that are ready to take the charge and do what we can to increase the community engagement in our district as much as we possibly can. So thank you to everyone who joined that meeting. And again, our next community meeting will be on March 30 at the Budget Committee meeting at Kane Ridge Elementary School. I will be sending out some information, but you will be able to find it on my socials as well. So thank you.
District 7.
Also, just want to recognize Cheryl Mays' work in the MLK convocation. I took it from you, Aaron. Her work in the MLK events the whole week, and that, I know you put your heart and soul in that, and to be able to represent Metro schools and have a connection to our students really means a lot and labor of love. So I want to recognize your hard work in that. And second of all, going back also to the event today of the Chamber, to also know that education isn't a vacuum, and that has to take infrastructure, and especially with the conversation with transportation. Remember that we had some challenges about just getting our kids on a school bus and fulfilling our school bus needs, and our director of schools and our chiefs, various chiefs, really stepped up and really solved a very difficult problem in really record time, considering how big a logistical that problem is, that it's one thing to say to educate, but then the barriers it takes infrastructure-wise, not with our children, but our city services to do that, and understanding that it's a community effort and a governmental effort, and that we're just not doing just one thing. We are literally running a second city so that. And then also, I really want to uplift our director of schools, Dr. Battle. The fact that we had someone who comes from MNPS, who had the institutional knowledge to really be able to articulate the history and the advances that we have made and affirm, and to speak it with such eloquence, is proves of what her great leadership has done and her vision for it, and to be able to articulate the vision and be able to stand behind her with that. I think that is something unique that we have, that to have that institutional knowledge of understanding what we have done, where we are now, and where we are going, and going back to Dr. Gentry's part to affirm what we do. And I think that's something that needs to be noted, that, it needs to be noted. Anyway, thank you very much. Oh, maybe you mentioned promiscuous. Thank you. Good night.
There we go. 8.
So first, happy birthday to Dr. Nabah McKenney. She really, she really made a huge sacrifice being around anywhere today, other than what she wanted to be doing besides this. First, the, one of the things I was struck by at the Chamber Report today is thinking about all the opportunities, actually, not just as a board member, but as a parent. So just to put a finer point on what work-based learning can do, so your student can actually go have a job during the day while also in school. So kids who are looking to have a job, make some money, and be in school at the same time, that is what this opportunity affords you. And one of the things that the industry representative was talking about is actually just wanting to get more kids who are interested in doing this. And so as a parent, I was sitting there thinking, oh, great, well, my daughter could do that. But also, my daughter could potentially apply to the School of Science and Math at Vanderbilt, which is currently taking applications, SSMV. January 30, they're doing an online Zoom presentation about what they are doing. She could be in an IB program at Hillsborough. She could go to one of our amazing magnet schools. And my son is going to do something theater-oriented, so that's why I'm not talking about him. But the number of opportunities.
Theater book.
Yes, we can talk more about that. The number of opportunities that I feel like my kids have that are just actually like really pretty incredible while they're in school is great. So I just was really excited about that as a parent, frankly. So SSMV applications are coming up, so students who are interested in going, SSMV is a program at Vanderbilt where you spend a day with professors working on actual science and math problems, really deep experiential learning, a great opportunity for students. So in the window now that we're in for optional schools, be sure, lots of different schools are having prospective parent and family nights. I know JT Moore had one tonight, West End has one tomorrow night. Hillsborough has an ACT boot camp this Saturday for juniors, so juniors who are looking for that opportunity. I want to congratulate a couple of students at Hillsborough, Serenity Safula and Ava Thorson and Dia Abdullah, who won awards at the Middle Tennessee Regional Art Exhibition recently. I was going to congratulate my friend Cheryl, who did an incredible job with the MLK events. And then, lastly, my dad turns 80 next Wednesday, February 1. And he was an elected councilman, and he loves stuff like this, so I'm just going to do a little shout out for him so I can later show him that I did that. So happy birthday, Pops.
Happy birthday, Ms. O'Hara. District 9.
So I want to start off by congratulating Grace Carlson, who was here earlier. She's from Hillwood High School and received the Knowles Teaching Fellowship. It's a wonderful honor, and we're just so proud that you're a Hilltopper. Also want to thank Mary York, also from Hillwood, which is just killing it, for coming to speak at the Chamber today. And it's just always such a joy to see her and to hear her passion for all of her academy students. So thank you for coming out for that. We really appreciate it. It was, it was really wonderful to hear you be able to brag on the kids that you've been working so hard to support all along. And finally, just a tiny bit more information about the math curriculum. The new math curriculum has gone through the first three steps of adoption, and there's now a windowed selection available for the general public to peruse and leave comments about. You can find them at the, for the rest of this week, at the MNEA Building, which is 531 Fairground Court, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Public comment will end this Friday, January 27. You can also review the materials online, and the links can be found on my social media pages. Thank you.
All right, senior board member, Mr. Abenizer.
Thank you. I just want to say a little about how I heard a lot about the state cutting the funding and stuff, and the really important thing that I heard is, at times when we do feel like something's out of our control, the one thing we can turn to is advocacy. And being on the board, the best lesson that I've heard is our best weapon is obviously advocacy. And I just want to reiterate that to students and help them understand that advocacy isn't just on the side of the parents and teachers, but it's also on the side of people that are teenagers and students who want to speak out for issues that concern them. And outside of that, obviously, I would want to appreciate all of the board members here sitting with me. I know that, you know, my days are counting down, but the best thing that I always see is the love that comes with the job that you guys actually do, which I think is very, very cool. And then outside of that, I just want to speak a little on scholarships. There's the CMFT Scholarship that has a deadline on February 1, which is basically the Community Foundation of Middle Tennessee. Only requirement is that we do a couple essays and submit a recommendation letter. And outside of that, I just want to urge seniors to understand that with scholarships, it's about taking ownership, looking for scholarships on your own. There might not always be someone to tell you, hey, apply for this or apply for that. You have to make sure that the scholarships are out there. You just have to make sure you're taking the ownership to apply for them. Thank you.
All right.
Do you need any recommendation letters? You might, you know, just saying, like, you got a few people you could hit up, Abenizer.
I think you'll be fine, Abenizer. So I appreciate everyone being in attendance today. I know that we have some future committee meetings, but I just want to make sure I say them out loud. In February, the second meeting in February, we'll have the director's report, yeah, we'll have director's evaluation, excuse me, committee meeting. In March, we're only going to have one meeting. The first meeting of the month is during spring break. So that second meeting, which is the 28th, thank you. So on the 28th, we'll have to have teaching and learning for the math adoption, and we'll also need to have budget for that presentation before we have all the community meetings. So I just want to make sure that we're aware of the potential scheduling.
We were also going to do a teaching and learning committee meeting on advanced academics in February.
Yep. Excuse me, I meant directly in response to today. I apologize.
And advocacy.
Beyond that, for District 2, I appreciate Senator Campbell for being at the Overton PAC meeting last night. We discussed heavily the third grade retention law and the potential impact that it will have. To that point, I also appreciate all of our staff having our meeting this Thursday. It's a lot of the questions that we're receiving from constituents and from staff as well, wanting to just try to get whatever information that's available to them. I think what's most frustrating is that we are giving you all the information we have. We would love to give you more, and that we understand that sometimes it doesn't make sense. And so we are really hoping to be as transparent as possible and as proactive as possible and that you know, for your family and for your students, what kind of services are available to you. So on that note, Promising Scholars is open right now for registration. Registration is this month. Keep in mind that the testing is in April, and that June is when Promising Scholars takes place, and then we'll have the scores in like July. So it is imperative that you sign up if you believe that your student may be in one of the two lower categories of TCAP. And you can think that for all kinds of reasons. I would like to remind you that we're providing our third-grade parents information about where their students are currently testing, as we do our internal map testing and otherwise. So you'll have some informed information there, of course, but you also should know that for just, you know your student best. They're your child. So if you believe that you might need to have access to have remediation if they have not tested well enough and may cause some concerns for retention in the third grade, that that is an available option to you, and that is open right now for, again, the month of June. That is a huge lift for our staff, and again, I appreciate all the work of creating, in essence, a, it's not miniature, but a midsize school district for a month. It's a, it's a lot, y'all, but we are happy to have it. I should also say, since we're really trying to push more for the good things that we're doing, the law was passed in 2020. There's so many other school districts that have said, you know, we'll get to that when we get to that, or don't cause alarm. I'm really proud of Dr. Battle and our staff, and of course, our board as well, of making sure that we went ahead and started implementing Promising Scholars right away so that we knew that we could do it and we could do it well. I think that shows our commitment to our teachers and our staff and respecting their time and expertise, but also our families and making sure that we could do the best job for them in a difficult situation. Next, for board business and management, please complete your state ethics compliance form, which is online by the end of this month. Don't, I don't want to get the nasty letter. And then I am out of town on Friday, so the board email that I send out will probably go out on Monday. And also for board business, before you leave, I'm sorry, before you leave, if you'll come over here real quick, we have a community meeting that we've been asked for us to attend at, and I'm just trying to make sure I have the right dates or the best dates for everybody. And other than that, I appreciate everybody being in attendance today at the Chamber event. I really appreciated seeing your faces in the audience. And it was really nice to hear from Mayor Cooper and the importance of investing in our students and our schools, and how that is always a good idea. And from Dr. Battle about how we have not just been a leader in work-based learning now, but have been for 15 years. And we know how to do this, but we also understand that there's going to be work to scale and grow that. And we expect some continued partnership that is fruitful from the Chamber to make sure that we can have best-certified staff and opportunities for those students so that we can continue to be successful and meet those needs. With there being no further business, this meeting is over. Thank you.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.